Hi, Dixie, how are you?
Good, because I don't want to be here.
Good evening, everyone. We're at the city council meeting, special council meeting for the budget work session. We'll be getting started here in about a minute. Thank you for joining.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Captain, we're reading. Mayor, go ahead and mark them. Councilman Paul.
President.
Councilman Bell.
President. President. Before we move into the budget workshop session, we're just on the announcement that our financial consultant has submitted a non-renewal for this contract, so he's pretty much wearing the face of movement from in for a few city halls. The city clerk, the deputy city clerk will be taking care of all the finances by the first of July. Totally, it's city hall. And at the meantime, we texted something because they're in a transition mode here. As a matter of fact, this will be the first time the rest of city clerk will be making the presentation. But I will say that this is a workshop for department heads in the mayor's council. And it's not open for public comments. Our next one, we do have a final tentative budget to be open for public comments and questions and answers. So having said that, on the turntable, the city clerk, the president, will be able to take a moment.
All right, good evening, everybody. We're going to present this budget a little bit different than our financial consultant did. I can see we're presenting a screen for everybody to follow along with. Please to realize as myself, the deputy clerk, had just basically gotten this presentation Friday afternoon. So how we're going to present it is I invited all the departments here. I'd like for one of you, when we call your section, just come sit by me here, just in case we have any questions or if there's anything that the council would like to ask regarding your budget, then you can leave right after your section is done. Mayor's council, how we are going to present this today is you will have to look behind your back here to look at the screens. We have your budget in front of you, and we are going to start with department head list and also with the property tax levy and revenues. So it's going to be a little bit different than what is in your packet and order, but we will be making the presentation as a new one.
Okay, so this first page is just summary of each current budget that is the draft budget. It's probably a balance, we're continuing to assess your goal along. And so this is just all the departments in total for example.
City general, please.
This is a general. Do you want to go ahead and go to the next screen? The following page is a summary of the last 10 years of property tax levy for tax analysis. Next year, we will not have secondary property tax because our debt service hasn't been off this year. It will just be general property taxes. Every year, we have to submit a levy limit worksheet to the state county. And currently, we have the capability of taxing citizens toward a 40%. But we are holding that at the moment at 138,000. We just wanted to show the last 10 years so that you all can see where we've been in taxes and how things have gone up and down. And we're going to have to hit the screen if we can show the next.
I'm having a hard time hearing you.
I'm sorry.
Could you also do more translation on that because we can't see any numbers?
Sure. So our assessed value for last year was $14,967,821 for all the properties assessed in our city. This year's assessment went up to $15,489,648, which is an increase of $521,827. Last year's primary tax rate was at .8708. This year, it will be at .8877, which translates to $8.77 per 100,000 dollar home. This line here just shows where the levy rate has gone out. These are consulting numbers I'm using. Very important, so let's do that.
I can't hear you.
Sorry. Is that better?
Yes.
Basically, the tax revenue increase, the overall, the increase for this year's tax levy rate per 100,000 dollars is going to be increased by either .167.
What is the red line?
I apologize if I was wrong, Regent, and I didn't have a study of current levy rate. I should have done so through this presentation together. I can find that in the third and I'll publish that on the website with these graphs.
Thank you.
As an explanation of what the leviness means, because it's not even below telling me what those are. I just know how to figure out the assessments and what we are going to be at per 100,000 for the tax rate. Okay, so now we have revenues, the property tax that we just discussed is the very first one. Here we'll see is 133,000, so 108,000. We did have an adjustment that's offered, of course, gave increase to that. We will make adjustments to that as we go along. The international government revenues from the state sharing, we are down 72,556 dollars from last year. So we have a decrease in revenues coming in from the state. That's happened across the board. The most hit is the revenue sharing, and most communities are feeling the same thing. Everybody got cut this year. Fines and fees, the only thing to really comment on this one is the magistrate fines. They have requested that we increase their time management fee from 20 to 40 dollars. That is not embedded in that number yet. We have to speak with the end as far as we can add increase. What that fee is, is if somebody has a fine and they can't afford to pay it on the front, then they can opt to do a contract with the court to pay them in three monthly installments, but there's a fee added on that. And most communities are at 40 dollars versus at 20, so the judges asked for that increase. We do have a few adjustments that we see from last year decreasing this year's revenue has decreased 20 bits since the last couple of years. And as our whole program, we reached funding end up this year because they are actually going to keep them off this sort of extra month, so we have increased that a little bit. Does Mayor also have any questions on our revenue section?
Use your mic, please.
I have a question, not necessarily specific thing, section. Actually, I've found this work through some of my managers and all of my revenue. I have a mark here, so I don't have any questions over here.
We can do per section, that would be easier to... So if you have any questions on the revenue part, that's what I ask.
Absolutely, and we can also tell you what's more specific section, what the number is and reference other pages, so you can pick up that certain section when you're at page four.
Mine doesn't have page numbers.
No, but the account codes, 1030, 301, is the revenue. We can tell you what account code that's in that page.
I want to suggest that this is just a workshop, this is a session. We're going to take up for this expression, he's got to give him an answer and write it on each one of his questions.
Sure, we'll get an answer.
I have a question. How do you arrive at negative 20,000 for the senior center?
For revenue last year, Regent, I anticipated 110,000 for your budget. For revenues, currently, this year, so far, you're at 47. Last year, you had 89 or 539. So increasing, I'll be fine when we come in with revenues because it was over the checkup last year. And you're also missing a look at before the next budget.
Well, we need to look at that.
Yes, I agree. This is what is going on in the draft.
Because I don't agree with that. I don't agree with those numbers, so we'll have to look at that.
Yep.
Now, we'll pick your section. Okay, and we'll, when you come here, we can discuss that.
Sounds good.
Okay. Morning, morning, everyone. Okay, Mayor, can I have your request to review the library section? According to that, I do want to make a couple of comments about the budget now that we're going into these centers. 400% increase for labor wage is on here, and that will go into effect in January, even as across the board. We also are doing some benefit changes with our employees. And by switching carriers and looking at other cost savings, we said we could probably save about $50,000 switching carriers. We also are, as Mayor mentioned, we're taking more in house in regards to the budget or finances. So that is also cost savings for the finance position. However, we are looking to getting the part-time consultants, probably specifically to 70,000 dollar range. We don't know yet depending on what practice, but that is also quite a good cost savings there. And we also got rid of the applications that public works with these things, the tall, the water apartment, that's where we're at, that was being submitted by the RA group. We got rid of those, and those were $40,000 cost savings. Okay, so now we're on Fund 1065, which is the library budget. The only thing that we did was we increased for equipment lines here because they were requesting some shelving, and they're going to use some of the donation from the friends as well, a magnitude donation for that cost that we put in. Also, they're desperate to do computers. So all we did was just change the line, we're just adding $2,000 there. Is there any questions on that, council?
Mayor.
Any questions, Mr. Martin? Okay, you're all set. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, the next is the magistrate, which they are not present, so I will discuss this, which is Fund 1056. A couple of things we will be doing here to clean up the budget, you'll notice we're out. I will be showing out with combining my items, that choosing one item instead of having two or three multiple items specifically to one. One of that is the 1056 through 12 line, and the 1056 through 19, and 1056 through 13. We are combining all of those into one line, and that's basically for the cost of attorneys, contracted unemployed, professional tech services. The only thing that the judge department requested was for an increase, a wage increase for the court clerk. Central position and duties have increased, and he knows that this is unjustified for her wages. And then the only other increase he wanted was the time payments, and then that we re-discussed. And then also, he wanted to have travel tracking lines being pushed a little bit because the judge's conference went up. And in that, we also reduced $2,200 in their office equipment and supply line. Any questions, Mr. Clerk?
My magistrate, or Regent?
They're not here.
Okay, I want to pack that over to Mark.
This is just the court clerk funds. We get subsidy funds from the court agreement by ordinance number 19-02. Comes from the security fees that's collected with fines. The judge can use that as discretion for any improvements in court. So this should have went for advantage, this should have went for prices that he can improve himself on. But she does have $5,000, as mentioned before. Okay, next slide. This is also the building officials slash zoning officers budget. We took $12,666 on the budget since it did not give any expense, and put it towards the department. But really, our department doesn't really do much, so he was fine with that. Okay, next is the senior center budget. So the senior center budget we have here was definitely the question, the food line. She had $505,000, which is a total of over $45,000 to $50,000 with the cost of the inflation and meal costs, which is justified expense. We took that $5,000 from the capital outlet that she does not use, she used once, and we put it into the food expense. That's how we came up with $50,000.
I don't see any revenue here for client donations. I don't see revenue, I see those that's a total of $50,000. I want to see, we have client donations, so if we can look at those in the 1030, 360, is there some revenue line?
Right. But year-to-date cash, that's 27,385.
Yes, and 3,000 of that is, I guess, you're asking about that, and we found that it's in the line. That's where this goes to. So we do, we got two grand. So actually, 24,000, 385, that's April 18. Okay, sorry. Senior center revenue, 44,000, 385 is extra revenue. 3,000 of the 47 that's on the screen is actually a grant that's miscoded in these figures on the line. That's April 18 expenditure or revenues that have been received. So we'll work with them with our current up-to-date where we're at and have discussions about what we should project for revenues for next year because it's over, it's over projected for last year. And that's why it's the revenues, but we're still pointing them underneath that. So we need to have discussions for that.
Okay, so we're going to show you revenue for April, May, and June. They have.
That is correct. I can run the first, I make a cell for you, because yours aren't currently in name. But yes, you'll have the revenue remaining in the office.
No, April. April's running there as far as we can see.
Okay, well, I'll bring it over, so that we can look at the system from what we've received, and then you see those. Okay.
And so that will be minus 20,000 as far as we can see. I think we're holding our own, and then maybe 20,000 is not correct.
Any questions?
Okay, so we'll continue to work again on the budget numbers to get these proper areas, and we'll look at that 20,000 as well. Is there any other consensus that you have on there?
Well, according to the actual revenues that are up here, we have several discrepancies that we need to discuss. Yeah, did you go by the actual April 18th or the actual 23, 24th is the next one? If we look at 1068, 131, or this comp, it goes from the actual is $534 to $2,040 as the actual. It doesn't make sense. So, and the next one, it doesn't make sense. Go down to income wages, I don't know what that is. It's usually zero to 18.29, it doesn't make sense to me.
Okay, so that, this presentation that we, that was sent over by Regent, the second column, the 2023, 24, actual, should actually read 2023 year, not last year's numbers. And I apologize to everyone that we did not change it before this presentation, but that's what is already sensitive in this column, is last year's year-end numbers. It needs to be updated, and we did not update it in the next session.
It's very confusing, so I guess we need to work on our paperwork.
Yes.
I have a question actually, so the very first column on the Thursday project, the very first column is from January 1st.
That would be from July 1st of last year. So April 18th fiscal year is July, is June. So that's not this horizon, but April 18th, this was run. And the second column again, just to clarify, apologies, it's not on the screen, is 2023 actual numbers from that year.
Or the, sorry, for the entire fiscal year.
Correct.
Then I'll have to look at this again, and we will have another session.
Actually, well, I can copy the Friday or Thursday, the one that stood here is the same, of course, is different. There's a difference between the one and the one that was the same, or is there?
Those numbers on the screen are the same numbers, not to be confused.
Are the, the one I picked up was, I think it was Thursday, Monday, Friday. Either way, is that, are the numbers in the one I picked up Thursday or Friday different than the one that's sitting here tonight?
So what you had on your desk for your exit relief for the next session is current year debate information that came out of the cell. So you can look at those after this conversation and export your questions for the next one. What we're working with for the budget numbers, which are on the screen, and if you need more explanation on that, I can give that to you, we just want you to have more information we want in the next session to go through the list. I can piggyback to you, we just want you to have more information we want in the next session to go through the list. So this next item on the screen is just a place for work for any, uh, grants or any kind of donations coming in for the senior center and their equipment fund. And it looks like they have around just, um, ready-out videos and just, uh, regular donations at the center. They have ten thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars that they have raised, that goes over. Next slide. Okay, the CPG grant here, um, this grant has been done by, so there's nothing, uh, to change the budget here. The boot corporation fund. And the visitor center. I have carried. So it was recommended that we, um, all expenses get combined with boot to graveyard, uh, just the graveyard portion, not the gift shop, as it will serve as dessert centers as well. Um, we are going to create line items for the dessert center with expenses that should be in the shared budget, uh, with the real. That utilities and office supplies, um, and then, let's see what we have here. We are going to make a transfer of the, uh, donation public. And there is no transfers, uh, to the general fund or to marketing, but there will be a transfer to HERF for a hundred and forty-five thousand.
What is HERF?
Which is our streets, how do you use your publics?
Okay. Clarissa? Clarissa? Um. If you go back to one, one slide, is the, um, it says, uh, donations, is that the, um, the, the cost to get into?
Yes, these are the donations. Um. We were going to have projected, um, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, but we are actually at two hundred and thirty-four. We're looking at possibly on track to do about two hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, and that was also with the rate increase that we did from three hundred and sixty-six dollars. And we seem to be having an issue, or we're having complaints about that decrease. Uh, does it, are lyrics happening? Okay, and we also, um, have the capital outlay, uh, five thousand dollars here for some improvements, um, uh, to the cabinet or to the, uh, graveyard as far as the repainting lacrosse is, roll markers. Uh, that's the type of funds that will be used, uh, for those expenses. We also have to transfer out, um, from the donations from bill, uh, to buildings, and it will be twenty-two thousand dollars to be transferred out there, as well as transferring to marketing events, which is seventeen thousand. So total we transferred out of the Kelp Fund is a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Any questions? Okay. I'll ask the total gift shop. Okay, so I have links on it, so it goes to the group of managers that just took over, um, as of March. Um, Google gift shop retail sales, um, are decreasing that line item by forty-five thousand. Um, we are pretty well stocked, uh, and we're overshot. Uh, so we are really decreasing that volume there. Uh, also, for online retail sales, that number is not correct. I'm not sure, um, where the number came from.
Um, say it started June sixth of last year, and since then we've gotten, and this includes the COVID and paracelsia. It'll be like forty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars, wrong, I said. Uh, I'm sorry, is it, uh, paracelsia was before paracelsia? Very important, not a risk, yes.
So those online sales with the tickets actually go, um, to the events line, but it looks like, um, right now we're at five thousand dollars online sales only right now, but there wasn't a little bit pushed yet, uh, for that, there won't be on that. Um. We'll get to that some next page here, but let me, uh, also intergovernment revenues, the parking fees that's listed on here, that is completely the wrong line item. Um, that's nothing that's been asked of Google, so that was just a miscode. So that will be adjusted as well. Next slide. Okay, we have increased, um, the first line of the advertising for Google gift shop by fifteen hundred dollars. This is to get the word out, um, for, uh, the online sales for advertising, uh, try to draw people to the website, also trying, uh, to text and become a tune stone, uh, to see who cover here, uh, through visit, uh, discover Google. The only other, we are recommending that we keep, um, sixty-three, forty-two, forty-seven, which is a visitor signage. Uh, we would like to decrease that actually, uh, and just keep it at two thousand dollars. So that would be another change. And as mentioned before, uh, we went down visitor inventory items through the overstock. We cut ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars out of the, uh, inventory items. Is there any question on Google gift shop? Do you have any questions or anything?
Castle out there, is that, is that the building movement for the, for the storage?
Okay, so there is another funding here that's for that. So we're finding out that a lot of these five thousand dollar capital outlays are all plugged into all of the departments. Um, it was explained that it was only used for capital items, meaning those were five thousand dollars. However, that rule has kind of changed now, um, based on our financial consultant told us that they could use it for anything that they would need, um, as far as building. So we can always draw from that and plus the other, fifth slide. Okay. That's it, you're good. Okay, so the next slide will be, um, public works.
Well, I'm waiting for this.
So also, also, I have a certain manager. I'll probably sit there. Yeah, we're gonna go on ten sixty. Um, okay, so public works, uh, we have separate areas in the budget, uh, including this is public. It used to be public buildings, but now it's changed to public works. Uh, this fund, we are going to be adding, the request was added, we have two laborers, and that is in this, um, in the salaries and wages here. Uh, we need to discuss, um, right now they're actually putting this like fifteen dollars an hour, I believe that we did adjust that rate, but we'll have to look at what was actually put into those labors. Um, we are also going to combine all throughout this budget, uh, self-accounts. We noticed there is line items, um, like maintenance and equipment, we need to be going to see when we see them on here, we need to combine the six cleaner, um, so that will be on the next, uh, budget meeting. That will show you that, uh, we're combining those funds. Uh, we, uh, ten sixteen, three one nine, which is professional check services, that is the area group, which is all those apps for it. Um, this line item is probably going to go down just a little bit, or quite a bit, uh, because we had, we're increasing due, due to the apps, but now we found, um, other apps that are actually, uh, or might actually better than what we had, and they actually ties into our system with CDO, so everything will be in a little time. This budget also did not have a line item for office supplies, so we added five hundred dollars there. Let me see what else they have on the list here. Oh, this also includes, um, a whole-time custodian, which we just made that happen last one. Uh, it also includes a part-time custodian that all they do is, uh, bathrooms, part-time, and getting the cardboard as well. Um, the cardboard cost to have someone do that besides the wages was only getting, let's get to that page so we can understand. So just to give a little, uh, synopsis of the cardboard, how much we get back from the cardboard sales. Um, we have a part-time custodian, plus picking up labor cost to get at the cardboard, and willing, uh, receiving revenue two thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars. And last year, uh, was two thousand and fourteen. So we're probably, we have a minimum threshold to go, I would say like in the first full year. Uh, one or two, they're probably talking about three hundred dollars, just so we know what the cardboard, uh, does cost picking up.
What is the cost? You said that's what you're getting in revenue? I didn't understand that.
So the cost, we have to break out the cost of what we pay the, the, uh, part-time custodian per hour. This is low wage, because three days a week, it takes some work, it's a day.
How many?
Three days a week, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and the cardboard.
I thought it was only two days. Okay.
Was, was that a, a whole semi of the cardboard?
Yeah, it's that.
Is cost a lot more, I can have numbers for the next meeting for what it's actually costing to have somebody pick up cardboard versus what we're getting back?
Uh, it's not the right time for that, because there's a better solution of another way to get rid of the city. Like, is that someone that's in work too? Is this gonna take a ton of labor, and someone's just gonna make her, the whole semi of the cardboard to get three hundred dollars for it? I guess that would be something.
Unfortunately, this is a contract that we have, um, waste management. Waste management has got its own, uh, it's been happening at some point in time. We have to decide how we're in, uh, we say there's more, then, or more focus, or more connection than what we're actually liking for. So in other words, they're saying we got, uh, seven hundred, this hypothetical number, and we're here to pay for five hundred. So there must be going in a hole, or having to pay it. And this is, this is an agreement that we put into a number of years back, not during the Miami administration, ever, ever, I just saw the random register, and they hid away. But I'm gonna tell you, we gotta get out of here, this, this is killing us. Cardboard, we have our own cardboard, but now we're, we're, this is where we can't, we can't do anything. So, can we get out of the contract with waste management if we're stuck there?
What's the timetable on that?
When does that contract expire?
Twenty twenty-six, I think it's twenty-six. It's like a four years.
I'm sorry?
I think it's twenty twenty-six.
So the twenty-six?
I believe so. We talked about it several times, I know, but I think it's twenty-six. Correct.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's a case of, and, and the way they, the way they do it, you know, we, we can't have this, this commercial, and the residential, the long-term, but, um, if, if you're, if you're commercial, you're gonna pay more money. But then, every now and then somebody has to do it, residential, you're stuck there. You're stuck, whether you like it or not, each residential, if you can.
Let me have one.
You got one?
I've got one.
Well, I'll call city, I'll, if there's one bad for you.
It's all your fault, Richard. Ding.
We moved some items to the buildings and facilities, so we have an accurate number here because some of it is embedded into the other funds. And so we want to make it cleaner, so we'll be adding additional funds to these lines. So this will be totally different when we see it next time. And in regards to public buildings... Okay, so on public buildings, 60-40 budget, library is requesting, it definitely needs a paint job of this one. We still have some thermite issues there. And the door is being replaced as well. Public Works office, we just replaced the AC, plumbing is put in, so that's not going to be in this budget for request. We use it for this current budget. But we will be moving the server room in Public Works office to the skating room. I just, I never really got the list of what Public Works needs to do. Also, yeah, no, but this is items to you guys. Shepherd Hall is the building that is what has been requested. Need to install a new floor or installing splits, as you can see today it's a little bit hot here. We're going to look at the parking lot and bathrooms. And possibly, we would like Mr. Burton's as well in the hall. And we are looking for something to hopefully do that this budget. TMO, we're looking at fixing the exterior wall and installing others. Fix the A8 door over. And the rest of the wall has previously wet the first floor by a dispass darkness. Has that been resolved?
Yes.
Okay. And then a split for downstairs in the other space area. The senior centers are requesting building maintenance, the A8 door, door closure is broken, it's being fixed. The side door lock needs attention, and then a new lamp. Fire station is door and door protectors. Okay, so that's off the list. Requesting a build out of the maintenance piece. They are going for a rent for $31,000, but we are looking at within that space for the fire chief. I believe about $20,000 per house that we're looking at doing. And it is, it is a big splits for some point in the main area. They need an exhaust system in there for the truck area, and plus we still have ventilation issues. The food shop, we already, the windows replaced. Adding a storage area and for inventory for jet. Fix the auto-tow fencing that they keep trying to break through. We need that fixed as well, interior wall for the office. The graveyard itself is repaired and painted. The crosses signage for Jewish memorial, repaint the steps to show the washer step. Side jockey break, left a walking pass, and the next can have a back area where it's perfectly open. Visitor center, we're looking at doing a whole painting interior review. TRC is going to be addressing the exterior with donation from the donation. But that's not starting for another, until next year's primary, next festival year. Then we are, as far as building units goes, as was requested in this one. The same thing with the city parks, the ball fields, the parking lot, and the safe pool maintenance. This all ties them together and we'll be moving those thumbs to make it more clean now. So this capital projects section is for a recent redevelopment placeholder, including the grant. Originally was the $8,000 grant, update that with the current numbers that we can go forward with the grant system. I don't recall the other day. Also this airport, grants that we have, charter money, we don't know what's at the numbers on here, but that's what this, this, this revenue fund is for. And then the expenses will offset what the revenues are. On the bottom, that's going to be on the next page. Okay, so that is everything for public works. Alright, the next one is fire department. Okay, the fire department. There's not really a huge changes here with our department. They are requesting a couple things. They would like to add four cell phones for the chief officers for first net. Which TMO is going to be going towards as well. We can also discuss that. They are requesting a laptop, since they postponed. Need to replace another computer that's in there. Also need a laptop in the maintenance space. They are looking to improve the building version we just spoke about last time. Their string line went down, Chris was able to just make some cuts. He would like to keep the 1500 that was cut over his string line. But we'll see how we can work that right in there. But that was a request at the time they had department start cutting. And he was cutting 1500 from there and then from, it looks like professional tech, cut $500, however, the professional tech. Some of that will be back in the line item, just because that was in the area groups, apps, and other, other financial consultants amounts. Is there anything to achieve that you'd like to...
Just other than ensuring that we get it cleaned. We have, and we have our condition, our meeting area today, that's super important because right now it's three times warm in there than it is here. So I appreciate all the access and work that you guys have put in.
Carissa, what is the debt service line? The bottom two lines.
That is for radios. I'm not mistaken, I can double check for that, which shows us the radios. Though that they had replaced their radios, and so that debt services came by, it's on these payments over these years. So that debt service, it goes secondary property taxes, it's these payments that we have to pay. So, charge payments, when we have a little bit of this, like explicit debt payments, but it's, this is not debt that we have to defer to the secondary. Just so, and here's the fire truck fund is what it's called, it's also against the wildland fire. This is basically a placeholder for wildland revenues, so if we go out to wildland, that's not each way, we can build states. And that only gets, the revenue comes technically, could be that for a while, but... Fire room retention fund, this is, nothing's changing here, we're keeping the same as we did earlier. This is goes to, it's pulled out of their check for the recharge fund. There's also funds to retire fire drivers that only have $100 a month. Okay, the open end settlement, this is money that comes in from the state through the marijuana tax. I just want to let you know that this is a 60-40 split, which means that the TMO gets 60% of money, 40% goes to the fire department. About $14,000 came in from your fire, we're projecting only 10, it looks like. I would have to get the statement kind of with that number there, I'm not sure, sort of like what seems out. But this can be used for anything that the fire department or the TMO wants.
Now, if you adjust that to the favor of the board, $10,000.
Do you, do you right happen to have a figure, do you need to order?
The, the money that come in as tax on the state, so the one thing before pot, then you get more money. I was really looking at seeing exactly how much we're going to get, and in fact, I don't even spoke to the marijuana, how it goes to go.
Okay, so now we are at the Marshals Department. So the Marshals Department, starting with just the salary line. Marshall Kirk has an intel analysis on roster from a grant, which will expire in October. And he has requested that this position be put into the budget. They are currently trying to source it with another grant. And if that does come to fruition, then that dollar amount will not be spent. But that, that dollar amount is in the, in the salaries line item. He has reduced one of his deputies from full-time to half-time, because that's the hours with that person that's working. So it would, from one full-time position down to a half-time, one of his officers, and increased for the intel analysis. There are some general line item concessions for line item 352. We need to increase that line a little bit more, because that's a CCOM contract, which is $65,000. And count 18, that comes in here, is a $13,500 expensive piece also in that line. And currently, there is not a, in that line item. So we're going to have to adjust that line item for the concession, so everybody has to catch that number. For comp has been adjusted, because we got the, the weights updated in the system since I took payroll over. So we'll see that on quite a few of the line items. Hopefully we've got more accurate intel now, so we've got better numbers. You see the increases there. The uniform allowance line has increased on this budget, it's always been in the budget, it just was not put in the current, the past budget. They did give allowance every payday, as we know, every, unfortunately, every payday. So that is an accurate number, but we're coming this next year. The vehicle maintenance line that was increased, we are getting the vehicles in, hopefully we can actually list them as a decrease amount. I don't think we need to increase it that much, there's been a lot of, the town was up, we had order last year, it's still not here. They are projecting this to be here July, August?
August.
August. With those in place, that's hopefully we don't have as much payments on the old equipment, we can reduce that. I think we can go on to the next line, this council has any questions on the regular portion of the TMO budget. The debt service, if you see the debt service sign, I guess that has increased. The initial numbers that grew in half point for this, this last year. He thought they were going to pay off one of the top rows, that's going to happen. So we do have to list them for the entire, the long time to be on the contract, so that over for TMO is increased for next year. With all these, and other donations coming in, we're paying our funds. We set up a separate revenue account for our payment fund. Any grants that come in, the $10,000 explicit, there is a potential space holder for grants that they might go for. The donation line, the anonymous donation lines, when they get money in, they can carry over to next year. There'll be these one balance after this year that will be carried forward.
Shelly, can you adjust that? That initial number will have to be increased, I currently have a $6,000 check in my pocket, $10,000 days in true self. And also I have an $18,000 check coming as a donation. So there's $24,000, plus what we expect is more, love to count here, so I wouldn't say increase that. Are you going away from managing physical budgets and budgets, or work on this budget? And don't forget the money from the master category that the mayor paid because of a bunch of problems.
No. It's not included in the paper. Currently, we do not have the annual control officer, the numbers that are in there are missed because they've already been taken out of that code. It's that, that, this fund is zero right now, across the board. And now we start with the grants that we currently have. Marshall, people, let's see, to these, I'll be going through them. We know that you guys are going out for more grants, we don't have our current list, which we will have to have before this budget is final. So that we can get those placed on the stand, to make sure we have enough money. Is the budget for the current budget available?
Absolutely, and I have several requirements that I have. One thing is in the governor's office, I would say, we do the white company. Where I expect in overtime of $5,000, that is $3,571, overtime plus $1,429 yearly. And line item 57, 41, 41. I can always, thank you, to go over those, if you have any other questions. Also, for the governor's office, I would say, the step program, the law will be seeking, I don't know, of overtime, again, $5,000. Which would be $3,571 overtime, plus $1,429 yearly. Additionally, from the governor's office, we're receiving $2,000 for PPTs. $10,473 for immunotoxylizer. $7,728 for radios. And I can, I will, if you need some help. And yeah, I have a good feeling some morning. And I want to add a question on the gamer grant. I see we have, from this current budget here, we have $672,299. And we'll be focusing on some $30 for the current budget here. And then about some of those, I'm just saying, all the next carryover, because the grant was something, I'll have to answer that. But we are expecting two more silver autos, one more interdiction vehicle, plus the radio is in that budget. And next budget year, 24, 25 budget here.
Okay, we need to go over all of those numbers, man.
We need to do that also on those, we can handle that, we can discuss that. And then, just go back to the fire department. We did receive a grant, which is getting for Arizona tracks, which I think is already in here. But we're receiving a question here with MTCs, which are the computers that we use in patrol cars, they have to build and all that. If we are able to, we have the computers, we have a lot of technology that could just kind of share, so we'll have to return those, so we don't have to pick them up anymore. But if we have some left over, those you can go to the fire department, raise the road, just set up a smoke. I'm not going to watch my dogs, they have leftovers, before you increase that.
All right, Coral, I want you to just go through these grant slides that we have currently, the ones we have currently on the books. To see if there's any questions from council. This all grant money being expended, no match to the state.
Unfortunately, we've been, I know our line talent analyst is also our grant writer. Which why we want to keep him, is that about $360,000 eligible grants so far this year, this calendar year. Which is going around, there's a grant, we have our, our, our grant, and to give you the specific numbers here, make sure there's space in the budget file. And then, I don't know if I can think of, and I'm not sure if this, this grant's going to go through or not, but we did play, basically two phantom debbies into the budget. Those positions will not be gold, if we do not get this grant, and if this grant is not matching. That's going to be the criteria, that we get this money pretty clear, without having a match. But we do need to have those two spots available. But if we're doing that grant with Chris Johnson today, we're not sure whether we can go through that, because we have the dollar amounts that we talked about. So I'd like to do one more, so more appreciation.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, for extension, that was making placement personally in the budget.
Just wanted to make a quick observation, as far as CCOM goes, dispatching licenses, 60-plus thousand figure. And I just don't want the Marshals office to be thinking with that full expense. They, CCOM also dispatches the fire department, so it's dispatching all emergency services for the city. And so I just didn't want people to walk away looking at, they looked at that line, thinking that that was a lot for just the Marshals office. I wanted to make sure that they're aware that they also dispatch for the fire department.
Okay, so that's, fund is the city hall fund. Okay, there has been slight increases into supplies, but $2,000 increase. We also are, we will be changing, we actually use software for tiny kids table. Also for council table, you're ready to pay, so we're going to send out checks, so we can do a readily ACH to them. So that's also going to go into this budget. And also a purchase order system will also be in, some of it's being paid out of this current budget. And then the maintenance will be into the, into the budget. So also in the salary wages, we did put back in our position that was taken previously. It was Shelley's position, and then it's moved to deputy. There's still a position open, we didn't fill it last year. Now we're going to fill it with, one of our employees in the office who's part-time right now, we'll make her full-time. So that would be the only adjustment in the wages. That is it for this in hall. This page just basically shows the capital allocation, $5,000 there, same as everybody else has in their budget. The next item is the Christmas lights donation fund. I will have to actually look at this further, because this was a donation given by, I believe, the two numbers, the Randy's, the Rado's, and the Lions Club. Previously, and I don't believe that, that money has been extended. So I don't believe we have that anymore. And we do have an abundance of Christmas lights that we purchased on sale from a running hardware. So I don't think we would need anything that I have this year. The elections, we do know we have an election coming up in July and in November. So this is just a small elections budget that we have, because the county's, the supplies are being, for this year, too, so they're requesting a more than $1,000 to supply it. The general fund for tourism, this is the tourism account that has the bed packs. We are projecting approximately $149,000 from our bed packs to be spent into the tourism fund. This is different from the visitor grant marketing fund. We no longer have the grant, so this will not be into the, the just under budget. $149,000. I still need to, myself, I sit down and figure out whether the line items are correct or not. So I don't have a chance to really review it in time for this meeting. But as the projections, we already received $132,000. So we need to change this number to the number to the law for, $149,000 next year. As I mentioned, there is no other, the AZ, visit AZ parking lot, that is over. That was also, okay, the marketing events line, this is... The transfer to tourism is the $17,000, and the transfer to the recovery mission is $17,000. This is to cover some of these for the ball fields that we hold against on. So in addition, we'll have the $94,000 and... Alright, this is all for the field, I'm sorry, there's too many pages of marketing that are here inside here. Yes, this is just all for the rental of the field and the expenditures and revenues. Okay, this is the mayor council. There has been a request that we increase the mayor council salary line. This is, we are probably the third lowest in the state. And it's kind of related to where the mayor council are able to, you know, the raise, with the cost of living. I don't have that exact figure right now, just for the moment. I put a double in the pink here. It's for mayor council pay, but we will get that breakdown before you move on, because that was projected. Okay, $1069 on department, so this is where we record our insurance funds for the city. And then, there's also a maintenance line in there, $100,000, that's in case it isn't getting throughout the budget. Grab this for you, to contain this line. $69,000, that's for fire works insurance, and some of our other liability expenses are recorded too. $1090 is just for turning along trucks for in and out. And those are shown on all the other budgets. Grant opportunities, this is a placeholder for all the grants that could come in this year. $100,000 with all the revenue, or all the grants that TMO has coming in, and a few others from other departments, like the department is actually also applying for grants this year. We have to have a placeholder for others, we expect it. We don't have that, if we get the grant, we can't send it, that's what this placeholder is for. This is all grant revenue. Sixty-five forty is our bakery expenses. That's not right. Our bakery is a sort of whole between idle archives. Actually needs to do some research with evidence, what this was for. I think we probably just started with that one. The last one is the old bond debt service. The last line can be crossed out because that payment was made already, and our debt is done. We will not have this budget for this next year. We will be on G O on. Any questions when we are at council?
So, it's a four, just to be clear, this development was prepared by the local office.
That is correct.
So obviously, no offense to you guys, but the amount of there is entitled, and you're frustrated. I've spent so many hours on through this, it makes a lot of questions. I do have, while the question has a motion, and give relevant of the numbers, or the surface, in current, um, twenty, twenty-two, three columns, this label. Most of the questions you have on the major, maybe you're relevant, or perhaps you have your own. That's probably only going to be the next word.
Yes, she's actually four over turned, and she's still working on giving in Excel formats, and then maybe you can make those corrections. But again, in a PDF document, that's all we had to work with. So she works hard to see, she's almost there. So hopefully, we can go in and plug in the changes, make the updates, make it clearer, so you guys can see an operation of it, and then see. That being said, she's trying to.
Anything further?
I need, my text council, he is going to have a public work session, since this was just kind of a, remember, a throwback at us at last time, because we had to make a permanent bunch of changes. The buddy's balance, it's just that we need to put things in the right places, speed it up a little bit. Or else we have the meeting on a home rule. Probably during the normal, or if some we could have a special meeting, what that would be like.
And no waiting, and I have another meeting. And I, I thought that somebody had to have a home rule under, but in time to hand this meeting, and this part came up there, uh, with an ad, she's gonna think, she's probably gonna go in, and be on the ballot for November, so.
That is correct, Mary, we still have to have a public hearing.
Yes, well, we don't have that.
On the large one.
Yes.
Okay. So we will also put another special work session right before or during that meeting?
Next, next week, yes. And then the next week, on the fourteenth, on the twelve.
The eleven, that will be the second. The eleven is.
That's when you'll have, you'll have to.
Yes, you'll review it before you have, and then probably, the second, probably three, for the home rule, and then the tentative budget, I think, and then the further option. And the tentative.
I hope everybody's satisfied, it's just the girl, they, they kind of got this done. You know, and the, with that, he's made some phenomenal, you know, very many callbacks, and then, but he did say, and the government, that he will continue on with it until the third of June. That's when he's contacted us. However, he said he wouldn't take any budget during meetings, he would take his and his home rule thing. He will actually, there's a good easy transition from all of the documents here, and he's got into the city and all. And we all, we're already in the year, for the, the, the account that we're getting through, that man called us. It's a bigger, it's a government, it is a government. And so I, I thank you for the time, I'm going to go to the side, and appreciate it, girls, thank you. Glad to talk to you, to the chairman.
Well, it's a pleasure. Well, it's amazing, and.